Welcome the new city council members. And the other thing is with the weather being as it is, I just want to remind folks that sidewalks are an important way for folk, for people to get around, and so I really encourage people to shovel theirs. And if their neighbor has, your neighbor has problems shoveling theirs, you might consider giving them a helping hand and shoveling your neighbors as well. Comments from council? Mr. Reedy, would you like to begin this evening?
Thank you. Tonight we're going to vote on leadership. I just want to thank the people of the City of Missoula and the council and the staff for allowing me to be city council president for the last two terms. A lot of my friends ask why I wasn't going to run again, and I, you know, after two terms, I'm, I'm a little burned out, and believe it or not, there's more of this job than would appear. I would hope in the future, though, I've noticed some things that really bother me. There's way too much abrasiveness towards staff. We have to respect everybody's opinion in here, whether we agree with them or not, and I, you know, sometimes it gets left behind. I've tried to be fair and honest and, and do the best job I can, could do, so. Just thanks a lot to the staff and the people that are still here, and the people, I see one of them sitting out there, Lois, and those people that let me be council president, thank you again.
Mr. Lovegrove?
See if I can do it right this time. I'd like to express my appreciation to the voters for putting me, for putting me in this seat and, and perhaps Ken Al's unwitting contribution to my campaign that I think brought this Brick Street issue to the forefront that motivated a lot of folks to do some things for my support as opposed to that of my opponent, because we have different perspectives on this, on this issue and, and the enabling legislation that allows these things to occur. I did want to state for the record that I have had conversations with certain people with regard to this subdivision. Kevin Owens, who spoke tonight, Jan Brochy, Steve McAfee, Joe Gorsch, Nick Kaufman, and Ryan Salisbury. I look forward to my time on the council. It's, it's a different situation from when I left, and there's a lot that's changed and that I'm going to have to learn. Like to remember to bring my adapter for my computer.[184.81][184.81](Laughter). Few details like that. I'm not a techie, I'd leave that to my offspring. At any rate, I, I look forward to working with the council, and, and I think there are a lot of things that, that lie ahead of us that will be exciting and, and will provide us with significant challenges, but being a solution-oriented person, I look forward to, to finding those solutions.
Mr. Ballas?
Just a couple regarding to this public hearing. Again, I think it's, I do want to make note that two people have actually contacted me. I think Jan Winters contacted me and, and expressed concern about the connection, the proposed connection between Cuny Suckle Park and, and this new park. And then, of course, Nick Kaufman called to get a sense of what concerns might be so he'd have some idea of how to plan for this. Then the other two items follow up on what the mayor said, and that's the sidewalk shoveling, is I'm becoming very concerned about the number of people around my area that aren't shoveling sidewalks, while there's a number that are. There seem to be a number of people that I've been able to associate with renters and college students that seem to leave for the holidays and don't get their sidewalks shoveled. And most of them are younger kids that have a lot more strength and stamina than some of us older people to shovel them, so I'm starting to, to take notes and addresses and will be reporting them to Public Works to, to follow up and get the sidewalks shoveled. The other item I'd like to, people out there that send us emails, when you send an email, you need to be very clear about what the subject is. Council, because we have public access to our computers, are subject to a high degree of smut and unwanted email, and a lot of us get in the habit of deleting anything that we cannot recognize as the subject type or person. So you can't tell from your email name who a person is if the subject matter isn't something that we're familiar with. Some of your comments may get deleted before we see them, so if you don't get an answer, it's probably what it is. But if you fill in the right subject matter so that we know it's actually council-related, you have a good chance of us at least looking at that mail.
Mr. Charney?
I want to welcome the four new council people, and I look forward to working with you the next two years. On the sidewalks, Mayor, I'm happy to report that all the sidewalks on my cul-de-sac, there's three houses and one apartment house, were all, have all been shoveled every morning by nine o'clock.
Well, we can cross that off Public Works list. Ms. Crowley?
First, I'd like to thank Jack for his service over the last two, last two terms as president. We appreciate all that you did, Jack, and also welcome the new council members. Hope we enjoy working with you. And I'm thinking about the city workers who are out there tonight in the cold. I'm sure the city has made sure they're going to be nice and warm. Right?
You know, it comes with the territory.
Mm-hmm.
They got to be out there, and I suspect some of them are cold.
Right, so I'll say thank you to them.
Yes, I think that's more inappropriate. Ms. Ry?
I just wanted to say that I'm glad to be here, excited, and I'm excited to work with the eleven of you and the mayor and the administration. And I also wanted to say that during the campaign, I held office hours at a little coffee shop in my ward, and I'm going to continue that on through the next four years. So I will put the date and, or the, the time and day and that kind of thing on the city council website through the city clerk's office when I get that up, probably in the next couple of weeks, so that I can meet with people and talk with people from the public whenever they would like to meet face-to-face and talk in the morning sometime or something like that. I also look forward, any comments from people on Ward Three, whether you voted for me or not, I look forward to working with you as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Nicholson?
I guess in, in the context of disclosure, I've also been involved in the Briggs meeting, and three of the people who testified tonight, I, I've talked to about it, and I think from my training session, I'm supposed to make that, that clear.
Thank you.
Okay. Secondly, I am delighted to be on the council, and I am part of the new group, and I'll learn as fast as I can. I didn't forget to bring my adapter, Bob, but I sure forgot where it was in my luggage, I'll tell you. So, we're, we're kind of in this together. Lastly, I'm painfully aware that I have about 1,460 days of council duty in front of me, and I expect to use every one of them. So with that, I'm glad to be aboard, and I feel a little bit like I'm on a train that's left the station, and let's see where we can go with this thing. Thanks.
Ms. Casimir-Zach?
Don, you know, you make it sound like a thousand in some days. Doesn't sound like a whole lot of time, and I'm glad you're all here for the ride. Couple things. Parking on sidewalks. In my neighborhood, we don't have a lot of sidewalks, and those that are there seem to be getting shoveled, for which we all thank you, especially the kids walking to school. For other people, they seem to think sidewalks in Ward Two are extended parking places, whether they don't have enough parking for one reason or another, or just because it's flat and nicer than the street for some reason. I don't know, but I would like you all to move your cars. The sidewalks are especially critically needed now that there's so much snow in the street. It's harder for people to control their cars, and people swerve into one another, and we certainly don't want any of the kids and/or other pedestrians getting hit because they had to walk in the street because there's a car on the sidewalk. In those few areas where we have sidewalks in our ward, let's keep them clear for people to use for walkways. I'd like to announce a meeting that I announced a couple of weeks ago, January 15th. It's a Thursday, not this Thursday, but it'll be next Thursday, at 6:30 right here in council chambers. So we'll be a meeting for supporters of the old Xavier Building, which is on the corner of Spruce and Orange, for ideas for use of that building. There's a lot of groups interested in readaptive use of that building. It's a beautiful, very solid historic structure, and this is kind of a cheerleading meeting for things that can be done with that building. So please come.
Mr. Engen?
I'd just like to welcome new members and welcome back folks who have been here before.
Ms. Kendall?
I'd like to make a couple thanks also to the people of Ward One. I'm really looking forward to representing them here. I'd also like to thank my family, my parents, my husband, and my kids. My kids are a little mystified by the whole thing, but they think it's really neat that my chair spins around. Thanks.
That's actually what attracted me to the job.
Hard to top, really. Okay, Mr. Floyd?
I'd like to welcome all the new members of council. I think it's going to be an adventure, and time will tell whether it's a good adventure or not. It is a commitment, a serious commitment, as I realize, being halfway through the term now, it's probably more than I bargained for. I would hope that we would remember the families of the 379th, which are deploying today for Iraq, even though they take all the glamour, you know, of going off to war. It's really difficult for the families that are left behind. And speaking of shoveling, I'm sure that was a job that some of the husbands had, so if you're a neighbor to one of these families, I hope you're helping me out.
Mr. Childers?
I think this is the first time I recall every city council member saying something in one evening. I think that's great. Brick Street, I asked Mr. Kaufman to do a bare-bones subdivision just so I could see how many 8,000-square-foot lots the subdivision would hold. It will hold 23. If you like them just as 8,000-square-foot lots, that's fine. If you'd rather have them configured in a nicer way, you look at the PNC. I spoke with Ann Gavin, who lives on Brick Street. I spoke with Nick Kaufman. I spoke with Jamie Hoffman. I think that's most of the people I was involved with there. I'd like to welcome the four new folks. This is going to be really fun. Two of them are sort of new, still kind of new, I guess. It's been long enough that they're new. 1,400 days just flies by, you won't, you won't know it even when, you can't get anything done, man, 1,400 days.
Okay, we don't have any committee reports, but we do have a little bit of new business. I believe two of you have submitted letters expressing your interest in being president of the council, Ms. Crowley and Mr. Childers. Have there been any others? Okay, then those essentially are the nominations for the office. I will open the discussion at this point, and I'll allow each of you a comment if you'd like, and then, well, before I do that, let me ask for any public comment. What we are doing is electing our council president. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Crowley?
Thanks. First, I would like to thank the members of the council who encouraged me to put my name forward for presidency. I appreciate their support. As a senior member of the council, I've observed three different presidents preside over the council. And along the way, I've developed a number of ideas that I think would improve the way we work together to reach our individual and collective goals. Ways that would enhance our relationship with our administration, help us reach out to community groups and organizations, and allow us to become more accessible to our constituents. The next two years will be exceptionally challenging, and I feel the knowledge and experience I've gained along the years will help with accepting the responsibility of this position. I welcome the opportunity to serve the council with a sense of dedication and enjoyment. Thank you.
Mr. Childers?
Distinguished ladies and gentlemen of the Missoula City Council. Ann Clayton.
Ann Clayton.
I've been asked to explain why I'm seeking the council presidency. In truth, I've done my best to bring you into the fold without answering that question, not because I don't have an answer, or because I think you don't deserve an answer, but because the answer is so generic and so common that I assume you all know it. But in case you don't, here goes. Council needs a president, and I'm the best person for the job. Why am I the best for the job? Because I have a history of working with, not against, people. Because I've spent 24 years as a city employee, eight years as a salaried employee, 12 years as a city treasurer, and four years as the city council representative for Ward Six. And because in those 24 years, I've shown myself to be good at getting things done, both individually and in, and in groups. Because I've chaired A and F for four years and tried to accomplish something positive with the zoning issues subcommittee. I'm the best because in my four years on a council, I've worked with all the council members, members of the public, the mayor, city staff, folks at the top, and the folks at the bottom. I've not always agreed with them on issues ranging from code enforcement to land management to health insurance, but I've always done my best to incorporate their ideas into my actions. Still, the council always needs a majority to act, and I've acknowledged that. I have a history of working with, not against, people. I found that I am most effective when there are specific issues to address and specific possibilities exist to address them. It's important to identify the right issues to pursue, then go after them in a constructive way. That's the way I like to do business. So vote for me, and let's have a productive two years as an effective city council. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on the nominations? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Lovegrove?
How is this going to make a comment that I'm going to vote in support of Luanne for a couple reasons, some of which she has alluded to in her comments, but I also wondered, she is the second senior member on the council. We've, we've had a male member as president for four years. Perhaps it's time to have a female member serve as president.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, Charney?
Childers.
Childers?
Childers.
Crowley?
Luanne Crowley.
Engen?
Childers.
Floyd?
Crowley.
Casimir-Zach?
Crowley.
Kendall?
Childers.
Lovegrove?
Crowley.
Nicholson?
Crowley.
Reedy?
Childers.
Ry?
Childers.
Ballas?
Crowley.
Six votes for Childers, six votes for Crowley.
The motion requires seven votes, so the motion fails? Actually, that's not right. Motion requires a majority, which, the motion fails anyway, but the motion requires a majority. Of the council. Well, no, it's of those voting in present, and maybe we ought to check that, Jim.
Other members elected, I believe?
The rules say it's seven of the elected to vote for president.
Okay, so it's of the council, then? Okay. All right, in any case, it fails. Does anybody want to talk about it? The mechanics here are we, we have to have, if we have the same vote twice, then we are open to additional nominations from the floor. So we can, if you have anything to talk about, we can take a break, we can do all kinds of things here. Mr. Childers?
Well, I might relate the, the history of how we arrived at a 6-6 vote. I visited with five people and found five supporters for my position. I visited with Clayton, Floyd, and found four provisional supporters who wanted four committee chairs. I visited with Jerry Ballas and found four provisional supporters who wanted four committee chairs. I visited with, gee, who was next? Nicholson, I think. Found essentially the same thing, and Bob Lovegrove. And by the time I got to Bob, I think we were down to three committee chairs. And I visited with the folks who had agreed to support me in the first place and found support for two committee chairs for the four people who were seeking four committee chairs, two chairs for two new members and two for new existing members. So I talked to, geez, I've talked to everybody. I talked to Luanne. I tried to give everybody all the information I had, and the last person I talked to was Jerry, and told him, you know, we can come out of here fairly early on Monday night if you go down to two committee chairs. And he said, well, that's just not good enough. And so here we are. Thank you.
Mr. Ballas?
Well, that's interesting, Ed. Let's go back a couple of years when Jack first won the presidency. What is new in, in this game? We voted for a president at that time, knowing who we were going to vote for for A and F so that Jimmy Graff was not going to get on there. So, you know, what is new? You talk to me and says, well, I can support you for conservation. I wonder what that was supposed to mean? So, you know, there's no doubt that the president of this council has some impact as to who committee chairs are going to be, and it's important to a lot of us who want a strong council and want to have some say in to how committee chairs are actually elected.
Mr. Childers?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jerry, if you inferred that I was saying we were doing anything different from what happened four years ago. I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just trying to relate the history of how we got to where we are. Strong council, I'm totally in favor of a strong council. I believe, in fact, that we have had a strong council for the four years that I've been on the city council, and oddly enough, there's never really been a good chance to show it because the strong council has been largely in agreement with the mayor. You can't really show how strong you are unless you're going to argue with somebody. Thank you.
Mr. Engen?
Well, there's been plenty of politicking going on, and I certainly participated in, in plenty of it. The larger issue for me is my experience with Ed. While a lot of what he says comes through a smirk, underneath the smirk, he actually does work well with people. He is very interested in achieving a result that's a compromise, and, and I've come to respect his opinion, his counsel, and his relentlessness in gathering facts and understanding them. That's where my support comes from.
Mr. Nicholson?
I'd like to work on the positive side as I think as we possibly can, so I'd like to kind of go back over some of my history with Luanne. I first met her when I joined the Five Valleys Endowment effort that was headed up by Sue Talbot about three years ago, and was impressed with her intelligence and her dedication to working on things that are philanthropic. I think that's important to have that sort of a mindset when you get into public service, and I like that about Luanne. I also think she's an extremely intelligent girl, and I think that the times ahead of us are going to require careful consideration and good, deep intelligence on, on the matters that are before us, and so I look forward to Luanne's assistance and help there. Her dedication to Missoula is really awfully good. She's been here, she lived here, she works here, she is constantly out investigating matters. She seldom comes to council meetings, and I've attended a lot of council meetings and listened to her testimony, and I'm always impressed with the, the depth with which she goes after subjects, and I think that's really important. And she's sensitive to the group tonight. You saw her call somebody out of the audience to say, you know, come on up here, I want to hear what you have to say. I, I think those are the kind of things that are, are beneficial to all of us. I don't know that I have the courage to do that, certainly not the first meeting, but maybe later on. Anyway, I like, I like Luanne and the way she has carried on business in the three years that I've known her, and that's why I'm supporting her.
Ms. Casimir-Zach?
I think following Don's lead, I think there's more positive things about Luanne. I can't remember how long ago I've met Luanne because we've found ourselves in a lot of meetings together, the same, I was always just a neighborhood rep for our neighborhood council, neighborhood association, et cetera, et cetera. Luanne, as a city council person and in other venues of her life. We were together when, oh, the guy whose name I never remember came from Australia, and we discussed street reclaiming, and we built a beautiful reclaimed, human-made artwork that, the sort of human traffic calming for Mountain Avenue, which was very exciting to watch, things like this in place, long before there were traffic circles popping up all over the city like our dandelions in our parks. You know, I, I think Luanne has shown dedicated, you know, dedication to Missoula itself, and that is something that really has always struck me. I see her at First Night, I see her various places and various supermarkets and coming out of various doors at various times, and, you know, it seems like she's always out and about. She is part of Missoula, and that's what we want in city council people, are people who are active citizens as well as active council people. I am trying hard in the new year to not say anything negative about anyone, but Ed, I'm sorry, if you want to reiterate how well you work with people, you told me a few days after the new year that I was the last person you called, and the only reason you called me is because Jack Reedy pressured you to call me. You weren't going to call me, Jack called me on your behalf, and if that's the mark of a born leader, it's not the kind of leader I want to be led by. I want to be led by a leader who is going to take the initiative. Luanne talks to me every Monday, every Wednesday, even when I make unpopular comments, and I think that's the mark of someone who is tolerant and willing to work with everyone on every level, and I think that is what we need. We need more cohesiveness and unity on this council amongst everyone.
Mr. Childers?
Well, I hate to leave anybody with the impression that that's a correct statement that you made, Ed, because it's not. I didn't, in fact, tell you that I called you because Jack pressured me into calling you. My goodness.
Mr. Charney?
Yeah, Childers has won five elections in this city. I think he's respected by the people, by the citizens of Missoula. Won three terms as city treasurer. It was this body, this council, that eliminated his position, and then he ran for city council, and has gotten elected twice. So, you know, I think he's respected, admired by the citizens of Missoula by his winning of five elections, and I'm going to support- And I'm going to support him because I think that's the people's choice.
Further discussion? You prepared to try another vote? Then we'll have a roll call vote.
Childers.
Childers.
Crowley.
Crowley.
Engen.
Childers.
Floyd.
Crowley.
Kazimir Zach?
Luanne Crowley.
Kendall?
Childers.
Lovegrove?
Crowley.
Nicholson?
Luanne.
Reedy?
Childers.
Rye? Childers. Dallas?
Crowley.
Charney?
Childers.
Vote of six votes for Childers, six votes for Crowley. Same votes each time.
Motion fails. Mr. Charney?
Let me try something. I don't know if we're going to, we're going to resolve this issue tonight. We still, we have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for nine o'clock Monday, Wednesday morning. I would like to proceed on the agenda to the election of a vice president. And, uh, so that we'll have a person to preside over that committee of the whole meeting when we will, we will be electing committee chairs. And then revisit this issue at our next meeting to see if we can't resolve the, the tie by then. And I throw that out, and I'm ready to make a nomination if it's acceptable, if that procedure is acceptable for the rest of the council.
The procedure would require a suspension of the rules. So it would require a two-thirds vote.
If I could hear some comments, I've got a strong opposition to that procedure, and the suspensions can be voted.
Any other discussion? Ms. Kazimir Zach?
I have no problem with Jack proceeding with, you know, being the chair of the council of the whole for the first meeting. I, I think that this issue expressly is written in the council rules, that we spent a lot and a lot, a lot of time on the last year rewriting the council rules, that we should try to adhere to those rules before we start suspending them on a regular basis.
Right, that's what I was saying. That was my only comment. Mr. Charney?
Yeah, in response to that, it's my intention to nominate Jack Reedy as the vice president of the council. I don't know what the rules say, I didn't look them up. But I think if the roles were reversed, for instance, that if Lois was still on the council and Jack was vice president, uh, president wasn't here because they went out of office, we wouldn't have a president to continue on Wednesday. And, you know, I think just because Jack is here, I think the same philosophy almost holds true. I mean, he's no longer president. He, he was, I think he was out of, out as president as of noon today. And, uh, you know, maybe the rules discredit that, but, yeah, anyway, my intent is to nominate Jack Reedy as the vice president of the council.
Just so we're clear on what the results would be if we don't elect anyone tonight, Mr. Nugent, I, I think that you've ruled in the past that if there's a, um, a position is not replaced, then the individual who currently holds the seat, uh, an appointed seat retains that seat until the, the newly designated person has been duly elected.
That is correct. It's common practice throughout the United States that the holdover candidate continues in off, or not candidate, the holdover person continues in the public office so that the public body can continue to do business until their successor is duly qualified and takes office.
So Mr. Reedy would, I mean, if you, if you aren't able to reach an agreement tonight, Mr. Reedy will continue to be the chair of the committee of the whole and the president of the council. Mr. Ballas?
Yeah, and I guess I would not like to vote for the vice president because I'd like to consider whoever doesn't get the president to be the vice president. And if you elect him first, it kind of eliminates that option, doesn't it?
Any further discussion? Would a re, I mean, we're, you're available to nominate people at this point. The other thing we can do is take a recess or, um, a motion to adjourn is always in order as well. Mr. Childers?
Why don't we try one more time? Just for the heck of it. And if it doesn't work out, and it doesn't look like it will, then I'd be happy to suspend the rules.
Mr. and Ms. Crowley?
Suspend the rules to do?
Well, we have a couple of choices. We can simply leave things as they are. The rules require us to select a president and a vice president. We can leave things as they are. We can elect a vice president, or at least we can try. There's certainly no guarantee of that either. We would try to suspend the rules to do one or both.
Mr. Floyd?
I kind of wonder how we think we're going to be able to suspend the rules because it requires a vote of eight.
You're right.
Mr. Nugent does point out an, an interesting catch-22 we've got here. Uh, the rules, uh, let me just read 28 sub B. The election of city council president and vice president shall be taken up as separate items of new business on the city council agenda at the first regular city council meeting in January. Now, then, well, what happens if we don't elect someone tonight? Then we'll be beyond the first city council meeting. And I think the question he raises is, do we need to suspend the rules to go home? And?
I'd, I'd like to see us just vote a few more times, and it seems-
Ms. Kazimir Zach?
It, it seems we ought to perhaps just vote a few more times that-
Okay. Let's do try to be recognized before we talk.
I, I thought I heard you say, "Anne."
No, I didn't.
I, I know you often fumble on the Kazimir Zach part, so.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Stevens?
Janet Stevens, could, um, we've, we've got new council members, and you need to remember to turn your mic off or else we'll get the feedback. It's just one of those quirks. If you're not using it, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay, are there, Mr. Ballas?
Yeah. In all fairness to Luanne, uh, Ed kind of made the insinuation that, uh, Luanne had committed to support certain council people for, for committee chairs. And, in, in fact, Luanne was, was very clear that if we supported them, she agreed that she would listen to us, but, but we've never felt that she was tied to supporting any particular person for, uh, a committee chair. So Luanne's been very clear, at least to me, uh, that she retains her independence to run, uh, the council presidents to the best of the council, to, to suit the council. And I've come to appreciate Luanne and her support of, of neighborhoods and found that she and I disagree on a lot of things, but when it comes down to supporting the integrity of, of the neighborhood and in listening to people, uh, she is one person that does that more than most people that I know of. And so it's one of the reasons why, uh, while I have some qualms about where Luanne and I may stand politically, um, I do support her and her, uh, wish to be president because of her longevity on the council and the ability that she's, has shown to, to recognize people in the neighborhood and to really support those people.
Further discussion? Are there, Ms. Kendall?
This probably is quite obvious to anyone, but this is a very, uh, this isn't the way I would choose to spend my first meeting as a council member. It's a, it's an unfortunate, uh, choice that we're presented with right off the bat. And I, I regret that. I know Ed and Luanne both a bit, and they're both, um, smart, wonderful, terrific people. And I would love to have the chance to vote for both of them. What has happened to bring us to where we are right now is that, um, Ed asked me for his support first. He has proven himself to be very accessible and helpful to me. I have spent more time with Ed because of the zoning issues, um, and I've been going to his subcommittee meetings for many, many weeks. And for those reasons, I have chosen to support Ed. I've gotten calls from people in the community who have, uh, suggested to me reasons for, for voting for both of them. And I don't doubt any, any of the compliments that people have given me about them. Again, I wish I could vote for both of them. And I do agree with those who are saying that having women in leadership positions is extremely important, and I've, um, I will continue to, uh, support that position. There are other positions of leadership, um, and I will support having women in those other positions. For now, I'm supporting Ed, and I'm going to stick with that in spite of the fact that, as I told Luanne, I think she is terrific, and I hope that we'll be able to work together in lots of ways in the next four years.
Additional discussion? Ms. Crowley?
I guess I could give my rendition of the history of how we got to be here. I think I heard soon after the elections that Ed was planning on running and that perhaps another council member was running. And I decided that in that situation, I probably wouldn't get the votes that I needed, so I decided to just wait and see what happened. I felt in my heart that I really couldn't support Ed for president. He, although he has a lot of good qualities, that there was something else I was looking for. So I did not put my name out as he did early in the game. And as things evolved, um, I was approached and asked if I would be ready, willing to put my name forward by the folks who are supporting me now. And that was a little bit late in the game, and it was hard to go to the new folks and say, hey, you've got an option. But, but I've been trying to make the case that the president sets a tone to the council people, to the people who watch us, to the community, to the folks that we're going to reach out to regionally. And that I feel like I, for myself and for the council, I'm very interested in, as I said in my letter, supporting each person in their specific goals, in reaching their goals on the council. Because I mean, I think that makes us more effective and it will help us work together. And that's how I came to be in this position. And I know it's tough on the new people. You don't know us, you don't know how we work, and you have to depend a lot on what other people are telling you. So I appreciate Heidi's comments, and I'm sure a lot of you feel in a tough position.
Mr. Reedy?
Saying my name's been batted around a little bit, I might respond here. I made it pretty obvious, I mean, statements that the only person that I wouldn't support would be Ed, and I'm not, wouldn't get into the, into the chairs. And I'll say it right here, I don't support anybody as a freshman to be on a chair. Period. I said that from the beginning. Luanne called me up the other day and asked if I was going to support a certain person and said, no. I made it perfectly clear to Luanne, I thought she was doing a heck of a good job on PPC, and that's a very influential spot in that, in this thing. I also said, I hope she planned to stay in that position. I promised Ed I'd vote for him, I don't go back on my words. And the reason I, foremost, I vote for him because he strongly supported me last time, Luanne ran against me. If we're going to get into politics, that's one of the reasons I didn't put my name into because I frankly had enough of that kind of politics. And, uh, if I had to get into it again, I would, but, uh, this is a good example of what you go through the first night of every two years. We all went through it. And I don't know whether I ganged up on Jim McGrath or not. Jerry, I remember supporting you for, come, both county commissioner and twice for, for, uh, city council, and you weren't even in my party. So, uh, let's not get me into the middle of this. I'm, 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 I didn't even put my name in for nomination. And if we're going to keep this up all night, well, if, I'd rather just carry myself over and vote on the, on the, on the pres, but it's not my choice, it's your choice. I made my choice.
Further discussion? Mr. Engen?
Just a question is, is a motion to postpone in order?
Well, give me a minute to discuss this with Mr. Nugent.
Apparently, we're going to get a brief postponement.
Okay, Ms. Engen, to try to respond to your question, um, you could do a motion to postpone, and normally that would be a, a majority, uh, vote. The problem we've got here is that if you do it that way, and then we adjourn, which is also a majority vote, and actually, any of you could make a motion to adjourn right now, and that motion takes precedence over all other motions. We'd just, we'd, we'd go at it and vote. So then, we would adjourn, we would, um, uh, when we come back next week, I think because of this language saying that the first regular city council meeting is going to require a two-thirds vote to take nominations, to even begin the discussion, you're going to have to suspend the rules. And that would be two-thirds of those present and voting. So if someone didn't vote, you know, then the, you know, normally it would be, you'd have to have eight positive votes, but if someone didn't vote, then the numbers start moving around. So that's one way that this can happen. The other way is to suspend the rules now to allow for this item to be taken up next week. And I think that would probably be the safest thing if that's what, you know, if that's really what you want to do, um, and try to do it that way. But in either way, I think you're going to have to have a suspension of the rules either tonight or next Monday night in order to elect a president if you don't elect the president tonight. Clear as mud?
Yeah. And the, and the reason I ask, Anne just, Anne just asked me-
Yeah, and the reason I ask, Anne just asked me what my reluctance was to keep voting tonight, and the reluctance is, I'm not sure anybody's going to change their mind tonight. And I'm wondering, and I'm just going to look at your faces and check some body language if you think a little cooling off, period, might be helpful. Luanne's thinking, "Not so much." I mean, I.
Well, I think, before we get to that, we ought to, we ought to take a recess, and we can visit in the halls if necessary. You know, it's amazing how many things get discussed when we have the opportunity to do it quietly over the drinking fountain. So, seeing no objections, why don't we have a recess until 10 minutes to 10? Well, if, you know, I won't call the meeting back to order if there are productive discussions happening. How's that? Okay? Seeing no objections, then we will recess until 10 minutes till 10. We are considering the issue of electing council president. Ms. Crowley and Mr. Childers have been nominated. The floor is open for additional nominations and debate. Okay, would you like to proceed to another vote? And we'll have a roll call vote.
Crowley.
Crowley.
Engen.
Childers.
Floyd.
Crowley.
Casimir-Zach.
Crowley.
Kendall.
Childers.
Lovegrove.
Crowley.
Nicholson.
Crowley.
Reedy.
Childers.
Rye.
Childers.
Crowley.
Charney.
Childers.
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 Six, six.
Motion fails. Any discussion? What's your pleasure? The other item of business that we ought to take care of in any regards is the appointments to committees. And that's something Mr. Reedy could do. You have all made your requests, I hope. I don't want to preempt the discussion for president, though. Mr. Reedy.
You have a list of all of them, don't you, Murray?
There's a list on your desks this evening. I don't know if I've heard from all of you about which, which subcommittees you'd like to sit on, but I have talked with everyone about which committees you'd like to sit on. So, I have heard from some of you about subcommittees, so that may not be complete, but technically, subcommittees are appointed by the committee chair of the subcommittee which it comes out of. So, in the case of the greenhouse gas subcommittee, that's a subcommittee of conservation, so that whomever is chair of conservation will make the appointments to that committee, for example.
Let me just add a little bit here. If we continue at impasse, then, as Mr. Nugent explained, Mr. Reedy will continue as president. Now, with respect to the issue of chairs, you have scheduled a meeting of committee of the hall for Wednesday and for deciding that issue. In the case where there's not a tie, then that individual becomes chair, that's pretty clear. In the case where there is a tie, then that, that issue then is carried over to the next meeting. And I believe it is if the tie is for two meetings, then the president of the council will decide who the chair ought to be. Now, if you haven't selected a president of the council by then, then Misty Reedy will continue to be the president of the council, and he will make that decision. Mr. Nicholson.
When you're doing this, deciding on who's chairman of the committees by vote, do you go at one committee until you get that one settled and then go to the next one, or how, what's the procedure?
It's entirely up to the council, to the committee of the hall. And this is a change, in the past, we have had the committees choose their own chair. The standard practice was that everyone would get on every committee, and we kind of go through this roundabout thing, so last year, the council agreed to just have the committee of the hall select the chairs and not do that particular dance, so. But, so this will be the first time we've done it this way, and I think it'll be up to Mr. Reedy to run that meeting, and, well, it'll be up to the president of the council to run that meeting, and we'll, I'm sure if you get stuck, you'll move on to the next one. Mr. Reedy.
As I said, it's left up to me, I'd take it in the order that, that the committees are held in the daytime. It'd be conservation of PZ and so on down the line. That'd be the best way to do it.
Okay. And I don't know, maybe that will be enough to get this thing off dead center, and maybe it won't.
Whatever.
Okay, let me get a sense of the council. Do you want to continue with votes? Do you want to continue with recesses, or would you like to continue with the agenda and adjourn? If you do adjourn, you're going to be required to have a two-thirds vote to take up election of the president. Two-thirds of those present and voting. Mr. Lovegrove.
What happens if we don't get a two-thirds vote?
Then you can't take up the item.
So, does Jack continue as president?
Yes, he does. No, he, this is for a two-year term.
Oh, for two years?
Yes, yeah. Well, at any point, the council wants to, can come up with the two-thirds vote, or you could change your rules, which requires a two-thirds vote. Then you could, you could, you could do it a different way. Mr. Reedy.
I would think that it wouldn't be too hard to get two-thirds to change the rules, I don't know. I certainly wouldn't vote against it, you know.
Well, you always want to be careful with that, because you want to know what the.
Well, the two-thirds, the two-thirds that you're going to, that you need is just to take up voting for the presidency, is that what you're saying?
Yes. That's correct.
We have to by law do that, don't we?
No, you don't. It's by your rules that make you choose the president. Mr. Ballas, then, Mr. Childers.
Isn't the other one we talked about, was a merch, is we suspend the rules and vote to postpone the meeting, and.
Yes, if you want to suspend the rules tonight.
Suspend the rules tonight, and then we could take it up at the next meeting without having the two-thirds vote.
That's right. We have the two-thirds vote tonight. That's the option. Mr. Childers.
And I think it'd be far easier to get a two-thirds vote tonight than it might be to get a two-thirds vote to consider the presidency later on. Think of the finagling that would go on there.
Ms. Casimir-Zach.
I guess I'm mystified at the willingness of everyone to leave this issue, and we've stayed here till midnight for lesser things, and for some reason, I think this is an important decision.
Could you check your microphones, please?
We are discussing a position that has an opportunity to make or break the next two years of our council, as some of us see it, or at least set an ideology or a trend of how we want Missoula to go in the future. And I'm really surprised at a number of you for your rather eagerness to get out the door rather than dealing with council business.
Further discussion? Mr. Charney.
I guess I'll make the motion, then, that we suspend the rules and post, with the intent of postponing the two items under new business till the next regular meeting of the city council.
Okay. The motion is before you. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Reedy.
I'll support that motion, and I would reply to Anne, I've seen too many mistakes made at midnight for people who want, just want to get out for the same reason. And I've seen a lot of bad mistakes made when we're tired, so I'd rather make a good mistake, I mean, make a good vote. Excuse me, I don't want that to come on the record. I'd rather make a, I'd rather make a vote when people are not tired and in a hurry to get home than I would to sit here all midnight and make one, so I'll support the motion.
Further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules to allow the vote for president and vice president to happen next week. Seeing none, we'll try a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no?
No.
All right, let's do a roll call, then.
Okay, on the motion to suspend the rules, Engen.
Aye.
Floyd.
Aye.
Casimir-Zach.
No.
Kendall.
Aye.
Lovegrove.
No.
Nicholson.
No.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rye.
Aye.
Ballas.
I'm going to vote aye.